Yeah. Can we turn up the volume on that please? I would like to start with the pledge please. Thank you. We mentioned state. Thank you, everyone. Here we are going to start with public comment. As we, yeah, as we have several people here, we would like to limit it to three minutes. So whoever would like to go first.
I'll go.
Okay, introduce yourself to everyone because they don't.
Hi, Dave Snow fifty-four Lacy Road. I'm a newcomer. But anyway, we are opposed to the gun range going in on Route sixty-nine. It's about half a mile, a little over half a mile from our house. And they recently did a test and you could hear those shots clear as day. Okay, so let's say a thousand rounds a day go off there, three hundred thousand rounds a year. It would totally wreck the ambience, the quiet. We already get, you know, the quietness of the of the area and and it would be also a hazard to our neighborhood, especially if there's an overshoot of of the target. They have two hundred yard target. That's a long way if they just slightly overshoot the the burn behind it. Bullet can sell for, I'm told, someone else will be a little more precise with that, but I'm told up to a mile, two miles. Nothing against guns. I love guns. I'm all for it. If they put that thing indoors, I'd join myself. Okay, but it it would severely adverse our property values and not just the ones on Lacy and Noelwood. The ones on Homiston, people from Homiston heard it. People on as far away as Fairwood would would possibly hear this because they want to have any caliber and they want to have a ski. Okay, so it it just is the wrong place for it. So I I heard that we this town wrote a note when they were going to put in the windmill there. There was some sort of some sort of input from Bethany objecting to it. I don't, you know, there was a note or something written about it. Anything this town can do to object to it with Prospect would be greatly appreciated. Also, they did say they notified each town. I went to their meeting last week. They said they noticed by Bethany, Cheshire and Dogma took of it and they said they didn't hear anything. So I would really like us to be represented in a no vote for the range or a yes vote for the they had an amendment to their zoning that will eliminate the gun range as a recreational use. It would grandfather their current gun range in. They have a gun range over near the Cheshire border. So that's all.
Thank you. Whoever wants to go next. Identify yourself, please.
Heather Brenton, sixteen Millwood Road, and I would urge you, the board selectmen, to submit testimony in response to the noting of zoning notification that Prospect did send. And they asked for input, this is the reason they sent you the notice. Jerry did submit testimony with regard to the windmill, both to the state and the legislature and the sighting council. This would definitely have an adverse effect on our neighborhood. They they did a test shot on, was it Sunday? It registered at our front porch, one gun, one shooter. It's sixty-eight decimals. And we're how far away?
I think we're about a mile.
We're about a mile away. Thirty-six lanes. I mean, you're not talking about one shooter. It's going to change the nature of the neighborhood or character and we're not going to be able to be outside. It's not to mention the way also important is the way they're shooting. They're shooting right into Bethany. They have sixty-eight acres. They can shoot in another direction. It would be definitely the hoof of the town for them to change their orientation. Ideally, they won't be able to scavenge it all. It is, you know, just it's something that I think the board selectmen could respond to the request both to the from the town with regard to zoning and then also submit testimony about how, you know, it's really it's going to affect the town adversely. It'll drop our property values and just be downright noisy. And noise pollution is, you know, a major problem for us. So very privately would appreciate it if you did submit testimony about the negative or adverse effect of how on the town.
Mary Ann Boots eighty-eight Lacy Road. There are a number of very troubling public health aspects to this proposal. One is ground pollution from the lead. The number of alleys they have for shooting is incredibly huge. The animal daycare on the corner of sixty-three and forty-two and sixty-nine will probably have to close because those animals are going to be so distressed by hearing all that gunfire. We also know that that kind of repeated noise has a stress response in people so that it's detrimental to the health of people who are going to hear this repeatedly. And and just the property values are just going to go. We won't be able to go sit outside and quietly enjoy Bethany the way he had. I have contacted the water company. They have not responded to me. They are under the Department of Health at the state level and so they have to be involved. I don't know when they will be or whatever, but I would encourage you to raise the public health issues with the town of Prospect, with the water company. And I don't know what regulations Quinipiac has. I've met with the health director for Chesapeake, which is Cheshire Prospect and Wilted and gone through their regs. Now, some towns have different regs about not noise pollution. They don't have them. They must be under police and I I have to look those up to see what they are in terms of the decimal level. But there, you know, whatever ammunition we have to prevent this, we need to use and we really need your input. Thank you.
Bob Brenton sixteen, oh, we're just going to hand out passes together. This is something that was supposed to be submitted by the applicant.
Yeah.
It's something that's required by the Prospect zoning regs for shooting ranges or surface danger zones. It's supposed to be drawn in accordance with the Army rangeman rule. And they didn't submit it, but there were a lot of things missing from their application. So they may be submitting as the thing goes along. So this, you know, it's just approximate because the reason I drew it is when I looked at their site plan, it looks like they're firing, you know, towards my house. Figure out where they're pretty close to it, you know, definitely firing towards their neighborhood. And the majority of shots will go into the berm and and not go down. But if anybody shoots high, there's no, a lot of other outdoor ranges have a hill or a mountain behind them, kind of a natural backstop. Prospect's range now has a hill behind it. But no, it'll it'll go. And I'm worried that, you know, I know Blue Trail Range, Longford shooting at the Durham a while ago. When I worked in Bloomfield, there was a problem with police range going into Windsor. And it's not from the people who are hitting bullseye. It's from people who are fast running and dumping the clip, you know, not aiming that that kind of happened. I I don't want to, it's certainly going to affect their property value. It was going to be worried about being shot and then the noise is definitely a concern. I could hear it inside neighbors or home heard it inside their house. It's not going to make me deaf. I mean, this was one night. It's pretty unpleasant if you could hear it in your house. And they're proposing to have the thing nine AM to dusk, seven days a week, you know, pretty much all year. You you won't, no one will ever do anything outside. You're never going to have it come open. And I mean, you know, it's a it's definitely an effect. I don't know who's going to buy a house, especially if it comes out that house is being hit by bullets and things like that. So obviously it'd be best for all of us if this didn't go in. I know you don't, we're not asking you to vote against it. It's not your thing, but if you could send a letter or anything like that. And there's obviously people up in Prospect who are even closer than us and the noise is going to be unbearable there.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Nina Horbury, forty-four Lacy. And I'm concerned because it's an outdoor gun range. And, you know, it's oriented such that you're going to be, they're going to be shooting into the area that's adjacent to the reservoir, sweatlands. I'm afraid it's going to affect my, you know, any of the groundwater or our wells. For example, Lordship, there was a gun range in Lordship in Stratford and that was closed due to lead contamination. That was, I guess, closed in nineteen eighty-six and it 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 took until two thousand, two thousand and one before it was all cleaned up. And they estimated four point eight million pounds of lead. So I'm really concerned about the, you know, the risk to the to the world.
Thank you.
I'd like to just say one thing. My name is Annette Snow and I'm at fifty-four Lacy Road. And I agree with everyone, everything that they said here, but a couple of things about the noise. We have batteries on our street too. DTSD like noise like is one thing. And then if there is sweat contamination with lead, I was told that there was Atwater Gun Club in Bethany where it's no longer usable. That land is destroyed. So we're worried about our property values, but mostly as I was thinking the last few days, I don't feel safe walking through our street anymore. I walk every day. And if a stray bullet is going to go through, like, we're just going to have to move. It it just, it's just unfathomable. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi, I'm I'm John Lewis. I'm also at Lacy Road here. Mary Ann and I have been in Bethany since seventy-six. I've been very impressed with the very faction nature of the of the presentations and I won't attempt to redo so. Let me give you our situation. When we came to Bethany, I had job offers in Philly and in New York City and in New Haven. We chose to come back to Connecticut, to Bethany because of the quality of life. If I was told that the the house that I was about to buy was occasionally hit by bullets or at risk of bullets or that I would hear staccato rifle fire for most of the day, for all days, I wouldn't have bought the house. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Has spoken? Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Welcome with me, we need John Paul. There are items to present.
Okay. Here, I you have, I submitted plans. Here, I was, I I brought them half signed. Okay. For the record, my name is John Paul Garcia. I'm a licensed professional, Jana Lance, a licensed in practice, his data Connecticut principal officer, one ninety Fairwood Road in the town of Bethany. I mean, representing the Bethany Fire Association. They want to construct the burn building.
Sure. Can you sit down because all we're seeing is your stomach on the screen?
And that is not my most part on the party. I'm trying to do. I'm trying to do these things standing up. Very good, Paul. Okay.
How's it like, Rick?
That's it. Jesus. Anyways. All right, let's start this again. They want to construct the burn building in the rear of the present firehouse. The location shown on the plan. What the burn building is, is a structure you have. I submitted specs on the burn building. What it is is an enclosure. And what they do is they pile pallets, you know, four, five, six pallets, whatever they need for the particular exercise they're running inside the building. They set them on fire and then they proceed to put them out. There's no accelerant used. They cannot use an accelerant by state code. It's just clean pallets. They're clean. They're not oil soaked and anything like that. The water that they would use is potable water. It's what they carry into tankers. And what we've installed is a slab inside the building with a drain. The drain would overflow to a holding tank. It's very similar to process wastewater or it's very similar to what you use in garages for drip off. And we have it for the present firehouse. Yeah, the drains in the firehouse are all connected to a tank. The tank is picked up once a year or however else they need to empty it by a licensed install by a licensed pumper and then it's taken to the to the sewage treatment plant for disposal. This would be the same thing, even though this is water with ash in it. I still would rather keep it as an enclosed system. We don't have to. We're not required to. They're only talking two to three hundred gallons of 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 processed water and it's potable. But I just, the idea of just dumping it on the ground is just, it I it doesn't. From an engineering standpoint, it's not the way to do this. So they plan to do it, use it, six to twelve burns a year is what I was told.
Six, twelve a year burns?
Yeah, six to twelve burns a year.
Yeah, that's that's burns, not just using the building. I mean, we use the building every week when we burn so many times a year.
Yeah, the the building is used as a training facility for our our department. It makes a lot of sense to have something like this. It's not an expensive proposition, but it provides a very valuable service to the town. But more importantly is grant money. The 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 hope is to try to get this paid for through grant money. So we're in kind of a time frame crunch.
Yeah, so we talked to, obviously, Paul.
For the record, this is.
Oh, yes. Brent Chicago, assistant deputy to the fire department. I also live at ten seventy-seven Ivy Road and I'm born and bred there. So yes, well, so Paul and Don, we've we've talked about this and this is just preliminary to see if it's we first did the feasibility study because it was originally on the site plan for this facility when the facility was proposed. And it technically was approved in the project. We just never had enough money to do it. With the amount of federal money, that's how they're available. We think now it's a good shot and especially being that there is still no answer for the Valley School and most of the burn buildings are starting to shut down. We are required to burn a minimum of once a year for training. We go out and spend thousands of dollars to do it and we're going forty-five minutes away with members and equipment to do so. It opens up a world of opportunity for our training. Our, my guys are all, actually, I should say, your guys are all training right now. It's Tuesday night. You know, we train every week, sometimes multiple times a week in the building, afford a lot of different types of training opportunities besides just burning. And it keeps the crews in town. It does give us the availability to work for burns with our mutual aid partners and things like that. So the the goal is to get this funded through grants, preferably no taxpayer money. And also, what we're looking for is that we want to move forward and get through the proper channels. We started with John Paul to make sure that it was feasible for the property and it would fit where we wanted it to, which it does. We would like to see all the the fees waived for the applications.
We'll make, when we make the application, we'll take care of that.
I have a couple of questions. Obviously, there'll have to be some permitting through the town.
We have to go, you have to do an eight twenty-four referral, which is what we're in the process of doing. And we have to go to plan and zone. Wetlands is already given their preliminary approval because it's over a hundred feet and there's no adverse impact.
Okay, I have a couple of other questions. What kind of maintenance is it, maintenance is involved with a building like this?
So there would be a maintenance contract that we would do and hopefully the goal would be to let other towns use it occasionally, like currently, right now, the Valley Fire School is using our facility for a class. Charge them the fees that we would normally pay when we go out, put that into a separate fund to keep the building. Specifically, the maintenance on it is really low cost. It's a steel building. It's concrete. The plans, the particular structure we're looking at, if we do go forward and we are approved, we're actually going to look at two different companies to let them compete a little and see what the options are. But two, two burn areas that are have removable parts, so you're not taking apart the whole building. The the heat from the pallets, it's more to generate a little bit of heat and a little bit of smoke to to get a real simulation for firefighters, especially the younger ones we bring in. Honestly, you don't see a lot of fire Bethany. So the the maintenance is very, knock on wood, depends on, yes, knock on wood. The maintenance on it is fairly low because of the structure of the building, the the way it's built.
Is there any, because I know this question will come up, any environmental with the smoke from the fires?
Minimal smoke pallets, clean pallets burn hot, they burn fairly clean. The smoke will be in the building. Yes, when we put water on it, you will see steam and you will.
Like when you do the burn for the school?
Right, right. Probably less because that, so when we do that burn for the school, that's actually a classic. So you're, we're burning furniture and and household goods. This would have none of that. So it's more like burning a campfire. Actually, to be honest with you, it's exactly like burning a campfire because it's it's pallet work, which is actually clean, no bark and it's fully dry, so.
Then another piece that I'm actually checking into is insurance. Because how, yeah, how this gets covered by the town, if there's any, I I've reached out to Kerma.
Yeah. We would definitely have to look at those things, but it's the same coverage as far as our training. It's no different than what we're doing at firehouse. When we do burn a car firehouse, it's, you know.
I just want to make sure because you're putting up a structure now on town property. You know, there's, there's.
Things still, yeah, no problem. That's why we're here because we want to make sure, you know, we're already spending, you know, fundraising money and money that we have saved for years for things like in the station and projects like this to pay John. We're not looking for, you know, freebies from anybody, but you know, this is something we've been thinking about for a long time and it's just getting harder to find places to train.
I just want to keep the force in front of the cart as we move along here.
This is.
You know.
It's a big plus for a number of reasons, not the least of which is if the Bethany is is extremely, and I don't know if anybody, if the if the taxpayers in the town know this, but we're very fortunate that we have a very large and very active volunteer fire department. And the beauty of this, a lot of them are in town. So that when there's a response, we're very fortunate. A number of the towns many years ago did the foolhardy thing and they said like, people that work for the for the public works to park could no longer answer fires on town, which is insanity. Because now you're going for a paid fire department and a paid fire department is going to cost you half a million to a million dollars a year at the minimum, if you're lucky.
How about, how about four to six for a town like that?
Is that, is that what they're saying? I'm working on twenty-year-old numbers. And and so allowing them to train in town is a large asset. I mean, they're not going to make money off renting it to other other facilities, but it also allows them to to practice relations, you know, good, good working relationships with the various surrounding towns because we have that issue always coming up. We're, you guys are all on the Woodbridge, you're always going to Seymour. So working with other towns, this is a big plus. So personally, and that's why we put the slab in, by the way. You asked about environmental. The only environmental is is the water. I've already checked with a couple of different departments. The water, if left untreated, is not considered hazardous. I just don't like the idea of having water carrying sediments just free flowing over the site. You want to keep it clean. So that's why we put the slab in. That's why we put the holding tank in. It just makes things that much cleaner and and provides for a cleaner environment. It's not required.
Where, one of the things we will look at with that tank is Wilted, where we do a lot of burns. But I believe they do the same thing. Their their burn building goes into a cistern. I believe they actually, they can reuse it for the burns.
Oh, that'd be better.
So it it is filtered, obviously, because we, you know, want big debris going.
Yeah, but that's easy to filter.
Right, so it is. So there is basically sedimentation in the bottom of the tank, but the cistern is basically, it's recycled. So we'll be looking into that option as well.
And according to drawing, it's twenty-seven feet high, the building? It's pretty much what you're, pretty much what's drawn here.
Yeah.
So
it's twenty-four and three to the to the roof. Yeah.
Right. So this way, and what that allows for is, as a matter of fact, we had a chimney fire the other night. I saw Woodbridge was in town and I believe training for chimney fire group operations because it's not just about firefighting. We do about a hundred million other things as well. So again, the structure like that currently trying to put ladders on our own building, you really can't do.
That's good for mine.
If anybody's been inside, we have a little bit of a setup for shortage. But, um, you know, yes, it gives us the ability in the ladder windows to firefighter safety and firefighter rescues and, you know, victim rescues and things like that for second floors and.
You have electricity and sirens and all that stuff out there?
There's no, there's no utility.
Flashing lights and sirens.
Yeah.
Because my son lives like fifty yards away from the building.
No, well, he shouldn't, you're, where where he is, he shouldn't see very much of it.
Right, but the water is a big issue.
Yeah, but but that's right. You're only two to three hundred gallons and it's all captured.
Yeah, six, six, twelve times a year, that that's.
From the, from the street, it's going to look like, I I jokingly say, this looks like an old fashioned feed store.
Good.
You know, that's what from the, you're going to see it from the street. But you're not going to see it from any other place other than directly as you, directly across from the parking lot at.
It will be well overshadowed by the salt.
Yeah.
Well, on your side. From any direction.
From any.
Well, you won't see it.
Well, the concerns that that I have are somewhat mitigated by what you said. This is way simpler than I expected you guys to come with. I I knew it was percolating, but I was thinking like Derby's incredible towered environmental contamination issue. So where is a similar one in a Connecticut town? Because this is just a metal structure on a cement slab with a thing around it collecting the water and hopefully you can reuse it. But the neighbors would be the first ones to complain if you're doing it more than twelve times and you're leasing out the other, you know, for for income.
The honestly, the neighbors in in the general area, like I said, I've been here my entire life. I know pretty much the entire street. Matter of fact, I spent the first twelve to fifteen years of my working adulthood in the building next door to that firehouse. We we train there every week. We're out there with sirens, water, power tools. We have never in my twenty-seven year, actually, I'll take that back because we've only been in there since, we'll be in there thirteen years now. The thirteen years we've been there, ever had one complaint.
Most of the time. It's screened mostly from Fairwood Road by the trees. By the, by the, by the salt shed.
Well, that was my question, twenty-seven foot support because it, you said, if you build a sixty-foot tower.
The only place you the only, the only place you're going to see it is from Amity Road and only in that narrow window between, say, the front of the Country Diner and the end of their parking lot, because that's the only place the trees are missing. Right, once you get, once you come up from the north or from the south heading north, the firehouse is going to screen it. You're coming the other way, the trees are going to screen it.
And I I think if you can recycle the water for the same use it's best because no such thing as a clean pallet, really. We're a manufacturer. I don't know where you're going to get clean.
Well, believe me, I throw about three hundred a month away at my current job. And yeah, the majority of them are clean and guess who's going to be supplying those?
Just takes a few that have.
But recycling would be good.
And what Paula says, that was my first question, liability. The town's going to own it and insurance and all that crap is is very important.
Yeah, so we can look at, I believe there, there are two or three from this particular company in Connecticut within an hour of us for career departments that have them on their own property that are not open to anybody but them. So like I said, we will be looking at them if approved. I mean, we want to take baby steps because we don't want to invest a lot of money if we're not going to be able to go forward.
Who would, who would fund this? What, what?
So there's, I've talked to Don and Paul of this project. What do we say? By the time we put the tank in, probably six fifty to seven hundred thousand.
And what's the source of funds we're talking here?
Um, we're going to legislatures. There's still quite a bit of money out there for first responders and.
Who, what? What?
Oh. There's, there's a lot of them out there.
Better investigate and just see which ones we can can.
What you do is you, you should start looking to see who's got grammar. We do this with the school. You start looking.
No, I'm just saying, but you don't have a ready mind is the answer. If you don't have the specific sorts of funds.
Not yet.
Yeah, Rich has a couple of things on his desk. Unfortunately, I can't almost work, so I can't stop my firehouse on my way today.
And and is there any way you can get three bids, like Mr. Don?
Well, we're, we're going to look at two.
On the GoBee?
Yeah, there's these, there's limited companies in the area. Once you start going further out. Yeah, there's these companies, there's limited companies in the area, once you start going further out, it just becomes more expensive for anything then. So we're gonna look at multiple, um, the, there's two big ones that actually do work in Connecticut, we're gonna look at those two and and do the comparisons. You know, um, and again, they're they're reasonably within the same with each other. Basically, the price difference becomes in the size of the structure. Um, because these get rather large, just like you mentioned, the New Haven Tower, the Old Valley Tower, um, the in which they don't make those block buildings and. You can't do those kind of burns anymore, those are the buildings that are closing that are leaving us nowhere to train.
Now, I was just looking at the New Haven site, wondering about that.
It's open, it's all the years I've been, it's open, that has closed and it's structural issue.
Thirty years ago. That that was a, it was a disaster ten years after the open, because those guys were doing uncontrolled burns. Yeah, they did some crazy things down there.
Cause they figured it's that part of town and.
No, it's just the way they used to do it.
That's the way it was, that was the technology.
Listen, we use, well, not me, but they used to wear three quarter boots and open hoops in fires with no air packs.
And they come on and go fire and start. Come on, buy a cigarette and have a beer.
Oh, uh Leslie has a question.
I have a question in regards to, I mean, I'm all in favor of you exploring grant funding to put this up. Is the fire department doing this independently, or are they doing, or are they going to be doing it? Are they going to be looking to the town to do it on their behalf?
Uh, well, we hope to work with the selectmen, because you talked to them to to give us a hand through some avenues. But uh like I said, we we're just excited that it even got through that it's uh, we can fit it on property, we'll see if it gets approved. By zoning first, again, before we go further.
And the grants, it depends on how the grants are written, sometimes the grants have to go through the town. Sometimes the grants go through a private party, it depends on on the on the particular grant and the verbiage and how they're distributing it. You know, like DEP, if you buy real, if you buy land. DEP has various. Processes you go through, sometimes you go through the town, sometimes you go through a land, um, a a land conservation company. It's it's all a matter of how the grant is written.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, unless there's a a some kind, some kind of a legal issue with that. Honestly, I don't see what the difference is, it's the town's property, yes, the fire department is a private entity, but. We're the town, it's a fire department, I mean, it's a team effort here, the last time I checked.
Paul said it depends on how the grants is, must be.
I I just wanna know from a fiscal standpoint, who's going to be, you know? Will we have to allocate additional? Man hour, you know, town employee man hours to assist with this, that's where, that's why I'm asking that question.
I think, I think right now they're not there yet. Yeah, I I think, step number one is we still have to get approval, and then they're gonna, they have to pursue the grant operation. Part of the grants, sometimes you get maintenance with it, usually you don't, uh, so there's gonna be a maintenance, um. Yeah, and then maintenance on this thing is relatively, you know, just sweeping up after the fire. This is, this is not a building with with maintenance, uh.
Oh, hold on, let me clarify something on the ma- on that particular maintenance, keeping it the facility, the building clean and usable. Yeah, no, that's on us, the maintenance contract would be. Make sure it's inspected annually, just like our radio system gets inspected, just to make sure it's, you know, don't the minimal stuff.
Yeah, there's.
I was referring in particular to writing the grant, researching the grant opportunities, applying for the grants.
Yeah, that's already been started, and at some point, they may need some help from the town, but again, it's to the town's benefit.
I just wanted, I just wanted to know what I need to keep on the radar.
Oh, yeah.
To look to see if um administrative costs can potentially be included in the grant, if you have to. Give additional man hours to.
Sometimes you can't some, it depends on the grant, sometimes you can't some.
Yes, little caveats, yeah. A good initial conversation, um, and then it's, yes, I see.
Just one question, I I'm hearing this will be available to surrounding towns. And will there be a second floor for stairwell training?
Yeah, it's a true story, doesn't have a stairwell next to her.
It's it's in a big.
So the next step for us is to, you know, it's positive on you guys, then we'll go to P and J.
Right.
I mean, right now, I I don't, I mean, I put discussion and possible action, but at this point, we have no action to take for you, because you're still investigating and looking into the funding and and that kind of thing.
No, we wanna be able to go.
We wanna make sure, no sense in trying to get funding if planning and zoning is not gonna let us even do it.
Well, we have no jurisdiction over planning.
You can say that it appears to be that the town is in favor of this.
So you basically want our blessing.
But I think you wanna make the motion as a board.
I'll make a motion that we investigate and continue the process um of the burned building uh.
Do we have the selectmen's approvals, we have our uh zone, do we have their application fees?
P and C has to waive those.
Typically, they would, it's a problem.
Yeah, when when you make application to P and J, one of the things you 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 uh. You ask for is a waiver of fees, because this is a town.
Like I said, a motion from us, basically to showing support for um continuing with the process, so to let you. Work it through and see. As as known, yeah, correct, with all of the questions.
And if changes, changes come up, the requires coming back.
This is far simpler than, again, that I had imagined would be useful to.
You have to come visit the fire department, we're a pretty simple group.
I stopped it on Tuesday night, it was quite impressive with all the training they had going on.
But this, just the burning of the pallets is primarily in a metal building with a concrete.
Smoke, heat ladders, upstairs, basically.
I'll be honest with you, have you ever seen the burn we do at the community school that we've been doing for the past fifteen years?
Okay, we'll have to make sure she knows it's pretty impressive.
And that we cannot do in this building, we cannot. I do that, but we've done that for the parking lot, we finally dismantled that.
I think that was the last one you said when you did.
For that one, yeah.
I remember at the fire school up in, up at the airport, some of the fires you guys were running.
Oh, yeah.
Let us um bring sort of closure to this, any other conversation or questions or whatever?
The last thing is um six to twelve times a year, but I would think you would wanna. You would let other towns.
That's that. I said that burns, so you know. It takes a toll and it's a lot of work to do a burn.
I will say that um in terms of the state fund or grant funding. That plays into it as well, as you understand that.
The, yeah.
The more times the more useful it is, the more likely you are to get the grant.
Yeah, those are burns, I, like I said, for burns, um, that doesn't mean that we won't have departments there all the time using it for.
Just saying that from the a funder's point of view.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it it will be put as a training facility.
And if you got a letter of intent from another town that they were going to use.
To use, again, I mean, we've already even asked the Valley Fire School, that we don't wanna be stepping on toes, because you all know, or may not know, they're been. Begging for their money, they have their site for their school, and they cannot get the state to release them. More than that, and it's painful, because they have nowhere to go, so they're bouncing from firehouse to firehouse doing classes and burning. These guys are going forty five to go on into airfield to burn.
All right, let me call the vote on this, so we can um, vote you all in favor of this.
Yeah, if he's uh handling this side of it for us, and then we'll keep up.
Enjoy the rest of your evening, thank you. Uh, the next, we have approving of minutes, I have the first one, it's February seventh, it's a regular meeting.
So me.
So me to second. The regular meeting.
Yeah, I think this one's fine.
Any other comments, questions, corrections? All in favor of approving February seventh minutes? Uh, February tenth, we had a special meeting, I think that was the quick one, just for the uh. Um, motion to accept the minutes. I'm sure we, that was a pretty straightforward one, all in favor?
That was the one minute meeting.
That was, that was the one minute. Uh, then we have February twenty first, we had the special combination uh Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, this. These minutes will also go in the Board of Finance packet next week for their review and approval as well, because it was a combination meeting, so. Anyone have any questions, comments, concern? Um, may I have a motion, then we can. Anyone?
Sure, I want to.
Uh, all in favor of approving February twenty first? Perfect, uh, we do have tax refunds, this, the sheet is on the table here, if you wanna take a look at those. Um, and I have a motion to approve the tax.
Make a motion to approve tax refunds, that's written in the total amount of five thousand eight hundred thirty four dollars and sixty eight.
The last column on the right, the last column on the right.
How come the numbers don't match? It's only fifteen cents off, but.
You know what, I have them on my desk, let me go.
It's on the line right here, it's fifty fifty versus.
I get paid to pay attention.
Fifty dollars and thirty five cents, so we need.
Okay, so I make the motion to um five thousand eight hundred thirty four dollars and fifty three cents.
Uh, thank you for that catch, Don, any other comments or questions regarding the tax refunds? All in favor of. Okay, there are no cemetery deeds for tonight. Um, I have, uh, we have two names that have been recommended by Chris Sullivan for the Inland Wetland Commission. We have a Frederick Fritz Oustman and Nicholas Donner, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, we have a motion to accept. Uh, Chris has talked to these two uh gentlemen with regard to their interest in in being on the board, and she does need. Members desperately, so they're happy to uh jump on board, so can I have a motion to approve, I make a motion to approve them. Any other questions or comments? Now, all in favor? All right, okay, I will let Chris know that tomorrow, and we will get them sworn in. Now, the uh participation of the Regional Council Hazardous Waste Collection Center, that's a multiple.
That's a multiple.
That is a multiple. Okay, I have my copy here, if you want, I have my copy here, if you wanna read up. Um, we we tabled it last month, because we wanted to do a little. Kind of investigation and see what our numbers were as far as usage, so we actually got the, what is that quarterly?
That's what I was saying.
Yes, so this year, uh, this half, it was a total of thirty three hundred seventy six dollars and seven cents. Which was our share, okay, which is a lot of money. Um, as far as Bethany. Quite a bit of it was waste oil and antifreeze was brought down by of some residents, which we take for free already. At our recycling center. Okay, um, we hit a total of forty two. Households for longer, for the six months, so forty two trips. By a Bethany resident in six months. My guess is it's the same five, six, seven people going weekly or biweekly or whatever. To bring most, to bring stuff that mostly we can bring to our recycling center.
What what happens when it goes to our recycling center, we pay for that to be taken away, correct?
Yes.
How much do we pay for that?
It's it's right, but but it's, there's not a, there's not a three thousand dollar. Um, fee to belong to bring it.
No, but you can bring a lot of different things.
I understand that, but so, well, we can bring that there too, however, there was, like I said, there was a total of forty two trips in six months. So.
It 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 is it possible that we, to save money, that. One or the other, we we take it to the water company, what we collect at our own, instead of having this big service to it, or no?
For the waste oil and the antifreeze, you mean?
Yeah.
Um, it's a service we provide and then we pay, I mean, instead of, there's no fee, there's no need of a law to bring it. Just bring it up here, then they come and they collect it.
Yeah, I know, everything there is free for residents, I'm just saying, we use it, so just comparing classes, all I'm saying is.
Well, but no, but there is other stuff that they take, they do take paint.
Right, right.
Paint stores take paint, I mean, there's a lot of things, there's very few things on the list that I saw that would. Or this ten thousand dollars a year, eight thousand dollars a year for us to manage this thing. Uh, we're not sure if it's mandatory. We did pay it, because it's, you know, we was due for the last six months, we had to pay it anyway.
It's ten thousand dollars a year?
Uh, this year, this this half was four thousand, last year, I believe, was almost ten thousand.
Four thousand and ten thousand, and that is totally based on a fee, and then on individuals bringing their stuff there?
Yeah, what they do is however many towns, and they divide it up by population, I'm guessing, there's um. It shows it here, Bethany's fee was thirty four hundred, just the fee, Brantford's was twenty one thousand. Uh, Merritt, Milford's was thirty four thousand, almost go by population. Or by a number of visits per.
Yeah.
Per town, I'm not sure how.
The way they calculate, the way they usually calculate that is based off of participation.
Right.
And what, how much was it, was collected?
Right.
And then it's a prorated cost per town. But yes, they do keep track of the number of visits, the number of cars that go through, as well as whatever. Charges are associated to disposing of whatever is taken there.
Do we know in our own recycling center that someone who is in that. Water business is not bringing all of their waste oil to our recycling center?
Uh, we don't, but they, you typically, it's, you know, a couple of quarts or a gallon at a time. Some, nobody's rolling fifty gallon drums of oil. No, not.
I have no idea of the volumes going through.
Get the numbers for it for next time, if you wanna know exactly how many gallons we're using, but there's no one wheeling fifty gallon.
What do you, what do you recommend?
Well, like I said, there's other stuff people bring, I mean, oven cleaner and paint thinner. We use an oven cleaner anymore, to this place.
To this, yeah.
You know, and like I said, if 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 it's, unless we can tell the people, educate the people on more stuff and more people participating. It seems like an awful lot of money to spend for. And again, forty people in six, so eighty people a year, eighty trips.
I was gonna say visits, cause you don't know if it's.
Might be the same five people, they can, you know, buy buy monthly trips or whatever.
We have to decide on this by June, right?
Right, I mean, we can certainly table it for another month, because it's not gonna go into effect until July first, if we wanna have some further discussion and and.
Now, the way that. The Noggetuck Valley cog does it, they have a tr- truck come to the different towns. So, so um Southbury, Noggetuck, Prospect, the first and second of whatever. The truck comes to the recycling center or to the town hall. And people bring stuff there, so I'm sure that's a lot more participation, because I'm not driving over the lawn off with a can of oven cleaner. It's just not gonna.
Don't, don't quote me on this, but Noggetuck Valley was years ahead of Scrog in many ways, and that's one of them. And they they got zillions more grant funding from federal agencies as well.
And again, I don't know if it's mandatory, we belong to it, if we have to pro- provide somewhere.
But they have a, they have a, they have staff and just in that, who are, who who are interested in that topic and have provided that.
The Scrog has a very small. The Scrog has a very small staff. And when they deal with a lot of transportation, like.
Totally different uh means than, yeah. Leader in EPA grants in the state as well. But anyway, be that as it may, that um. We should know more, I think, you know? This makes me uncomfortable.
We could take it with again, it's only Mark.
But we don't know how to find out more, like I said, the only thing we got is what we got from them, and we got.
Probably is individuals going down there with paint thinner.
Yeah, right, the same, the same. Cause I don't know how many people re- really know about this.
Well, as I say, we either have to eh put an education program out there and say, this is what you can bring, but to run from Bethany down to Long Wharf. On a Saturday. Valley, they, we do come to Bethany. On the first Saturday of September or whatever.
Reaching out to Nagatuck Valley.
Well, we're not, we're not in the cog, so they.
Maybe for a small fee. I mean, if, if, is it? Are they hiring a company to do it, so?
Because if they're hiring waste management to do it, then maybe you can jump in.
Why?
Right, I go like. I could try and, and.
So I, I think this is. But this doesn't make sense to me either when I think about it. But we also, we don't know what's, who's bringing what to our recycling center, that's my point, we're really not.
As we put cameras up with face recognition.
We have one, you know, if our one staffer or two staffers just can be a little bit more observant. Is it the same individuals or cars or vehicles coming in? Bringing this, bringing that, i- is it? Or is it?
The batteries, we actually make.
Even cardboard, cardboard is a big deal.
Well, the cardboard goes in the bin, so I mean. I mean, my husband likes clockwork, seven thirty every Saturday morning, so you know.
Waste thing for, for people who are in business, couple boxes.
They don't allow commercial, you can't come and pick up truck full of cardboard. Now, if I come with my Explorer going with cardboard. You know what I mean?
Just, just to be, if you could, I don't know who was working there anymore, but if you just ask them to be mindful. Who's doing what, when, are there regulars? We, we do it too, but we just bring normal stuff, but.
Yeah, well, as, as do we.
Oh, because this is also a, leads into the other big issue we know about, right? That Eric Freeman, everybody keeps talking about, is that we're being, taking advantage of. Um and we may should not do that. By allowing everything to be free and, you know, providing the service. Um to businesses and just like. Our uh trash we picked up. We don't, we don't say you can only put two barrels of trash out, we say, hey, put your trash out.
Actually, with the recycling center, they're supposed to have the um pass on their window. That they get with their.
So now you're talking, now you're talking, you're talking on a different path, now you're saying as far as. Two bags, three bags, four bags of trash, that's a different animal. Some people have to understand that when I was younger, I, as three kids, I had ten bags of garbage. Now we're older, we have two bags of garbage. The people in town, when I was younger, paid, subsidized me, I guess. And now I'm subsidizing them, so I mean, it's, it's, it's.
Yes.
And unless we just.
But I had a dumpster, I had to pay for it, and regularly, there was a couple bozos who were painters, would put all the paint cans in.
Cool.
And I found places at the bottom of my dumpster, and I got them to pay for it, it's expensive. You know, so and they're just driving around looking where they can dump and go have a few beers. We just want to know what's, what's right, what's fair in our town, that's all. Cause most people do follow us.
Well, I pay, I pay my taxes and. But my husband brings our trash. To his office, because he pays for the dumpster at his office. And so I don't even put pails out every week, but my taxes are paying for.
Well, you've seen it.
And I mean, I've driven around town and I've seen ten bags.
Yeah, it's big garbage. If I clean the barn, if I clean the, whatever. So we try a little man like this.
Depends on if it's a holiday. And the families gathering. To table to, for another month, bring it to April.
Listen, can we get more statistics about this? So you said the fees thirty-four hundred, and what, what else? For over, over the years, Leslie, you were looking at it.
Well, it, it varies, there is, it's not a set in stone dollar amount, it is based off of. How many people go and dispose of items?
Not population, then how, usage?
It is, it is usage driven.
So it could be the same person going forty, forty-nine times.
Probably mostly is.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know, unless they're taking addresses and names, you're.
So we could call them and get the list, maybe, who goes down there, I mean, is it, have we?
I don't know. We can try to get that information, I don't know.
I mean, they might look for drivers.
Driver's licenses. But they may not record who it is, they may just record a town.
Last time I went down there, I had to sign up ahead of time with the name and address and everything to make sure you're in a town that was. Why, I went once with Will to uh. Woodbridge, the transfer station, because they did a joint one with Bethany over there for the hazardous stuff. And then once down the long word, and they did the same both times. He had to register on.
They will have a list then.
Is there, is there any way to work with another town around, you know, and all this stuff?
I think the answer is we need to reach out to them directly and find out. What they give.
If we can find out who's Southbury or Nagatuck, I know they use, it's more um. Nagatuck Valley cog or scrog.
So Woodbridge is in this, and so is Orange.
Has a hazardous waste day in Orange.
So they're paying. Because we would give up a lot more participation, obviously, if, if bring it up to recycling.
People would be more apt to come up to recycling. Than having to go down to Long Wharf. You know, you say, hey, this, this particular Saturday, we are going to collect this, 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 and this.
But we're not allowed to uh have certain things collected, I think.
Well, I mean, if, if a company was coming in to specifically.
Oh, yeah, no, that's different.
Yeah, to specifically collect those items.
But the way the um. Nagatuck Valley. Cog does it. Is they rotate towns. For onsite pickup of the hazardous places.
Right, so it's not going to the same town every month.
Right, and it's usually done. Three or four times a year, so if there's ten participating towns, you're going to host it every two and a half years.
I'm su- sure it's a lot less expensive too, instead of having a. Footprint in a building and, and staff, they have a truck with, with a guy or two. Which must, you know, sounds cheap to me.
But it's can still get expensive.
Absolutely, right.
And if there's a mistake.
And I als- I also know from having monitored. The pricing before, the expenses be in the past. The month, the quarter that it is in, in your town, your costs are usually twice as much as. As if.
Sure.
You're, you're going to one of the other towns.
Right.
Because everyone holds it until it's in their backyard.
Right. And again, it's, it's, it's supposedly for recycling, so it's doing its job, people recycling. And, yeah, but like I said, it's, as far as the sixty, ten thousand dollars a year, I don't know if it's. If it's cost effective that way, but what else can we do with this stuff?
We may not have a choice, and because some of this stuff is not nice. You really don't want to have a spill. Yeah.
But most of the stuff that they take now, you can't buy anymore. You can't buy good chemicals anymore. Really? Water-based, everybody's water-based at this point, so.
Can I take one of these, since you got a bunch of copies?
Well, they're not the same thing.
Well, they're not.
No, they're not.
No?
You look at the ti- the title on top of one page, it's for one type of thing, and then if you look on the other page, it's a different material.
Schedule one, schedule one.
I have a packet, I can bring.
Yeah, cause, just, if you could just give me a copy of this.
I'll email one to you tomorrow.
Yeah, we can, we can scan the whole thing and. Look at this too.
Yeah.
And there is a list on the, on their website of what they take.
Yes.
Well, like I said, most of the stuff they take, they're not going to find in the comment. You can't buy them anymore, so most people are cleaning after grass fifty years ago.
Yes.
Like oven cleaner.
Not all self-clean, but.
No, but most people, you don't see people on their hands in these.
So, so what, 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 what do we want to do? Want to table one more month?
Don't get more information.
Yes, we'll table one more month.
Making a motion to table one more month and she's just shaking her head. It's second, yeah, so I think we.
And like I said, we are current through January, so.
Yeah, and, and, and our co- current contract goes to June thirtieth. This resolution is for the next three years, so we are, we are okay for, for the rest of this fiscal year.
I mean, if you can go back to work and say, well, what are we paying for, we're worried about this for a little town, we, we do this here too. How do other towns deal with it?
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're probably mandated by the state to operate this as well, right?
Yeah. They're, they're probably covering regular costs that they have to, for maintenance, payroll, all kinds of.
They have to, and that necessarily goes safe. Want to, maybe, I don't know.
All right, uh let me call the vote, all in favor, we will table up uh till May, uh excuse me, till April.
To get more information, more. To gather more information, so listen. Just to know, just to know, we, we may end up in the same, same vote, just.
Just want to gather more information, I will, you know, between Strad and. Okay, um item number eight was the, I had put in a recommended, uh we were looking at the. Fees for. The pavilion and the.
What does our um? Folks who run this program think about this, they okay, are they in the rec department, are they?
They, they don't control it, they sort of, it's a time. So we, we would just let them know that.
But I mean, what do they think about that, do they feel like? They have any scuttlebutt when people call and says, say, oh, I want rented. About fees.
No, um. I really, you know, we, we, I kind of had. Sort of put it by Janice, but there was not really major conversation on it, it was just sort of, let's put these proposals out there and see what you guys think.
Just because, I, I mean, I wasn't here for the Janet, the income part of the, the whole budget workshop you did. So, and, and so that was the questions.
But this doesn't go under parking rep. This.
Will.
Different.
But uh not at all, nothing, none of it goes in a parking rep.
It goes, and it goes under vet park, vet park has its own, vet, vet park has its own income line.
Who, who is the individual that? Someone talks to when they.
It would be Janice, it would be Janice.
Books the reservation.
It is her, but she's not technically parking rep.
She's the director of parking rep, but. She, she gets a stipend for helping when people call to, to reserve. You know, for events.
Yeah.
They talk to her, I just wanted to know what she thought about all this.
She was aware of these.
Yeah, I mean. We make the decision, she doesn't make the decision, we will just dictate to her, if the change is made, we update the forms. And then she just lets people know when they call.
I just respect her opinions, and she's been doing this for a while.
Okay, to that end, um she is. All in. She's in favor of changing the refundable security deposit to a non-refundable deposit. She is in favor of that.
Yeah. That was. Definitely part of the conversation, but as far as the increase in the fees, she really. Yeah, yeah, so that's why there's two sort of, two different options here, depending on how much we potentially want to increase it. These were just random ones I threw out there and um, but.
I mean, we're obviously in the hole, we don't, income doesn't.
The winter time is.
At the current time, the rental income does not cover the expenses to run. That part.
You know, and, and that's why I had said that, how many? People are using it, it, it was much more used when my kids were little.
Well, part was. The park itself is one thing, because there's no fee to use.
Right, right, right.
But if you're, if you're renting the pavilion or the lodge. Well, that's why there's the non-resident and the resident.
This is, this is strictly to rent either the pavilion or the lodge for an event for a debt. Or a part of a debt.
It talks about the hours.
Were, were we using, I mean, but if, if I was. I, I like to, I'd say, this is the way it was over a number of years, so I had no idea about looking at this. What the income was, you know. Ten years ago, five years ago.
It was ever a moneymaker.
Has, has it gone down with the number of rentals that we have, or is it staying the same?
It's rented a lot.
It, it, it's, I think it's gone up, especially, you know, after, with COVID, nothing happened.
Yeah.
So that sort of, you know, basically shut everything down, but once COVID kind of things lifted, that people were. You know, anxious to have events and parties, I mean, we've used it, we've had it rented for baby showers.
Wedding.
Wedding showers. Wedding receptions, people have rented it for birthday parties.
No, it's perfect.
So.
And as far as the feed, it's, it, it's very costly for us. We have a janitor on staff for the whole eight hours it's rented. Or six hours, plus two hours, whatever. And then there's cleanup before and cleanup after, so then we're paying somebody pretty much eight hours of pay. For someone to have a baby shower there. So it's costing us a hundred and sixty bucks, plus heat, plus electricity, plus. To rent it to somebody, so. Not so much the pavilion.
The bathrooms were, were, were broken down there at one time, or I haven't looked recently.
Well, they're shut down for the winter right now.
Oh, they're locked, they're locked.
They're winterized for the winter.
The, the porta-potties were abused a couple times, with the red doors coming up, but the bathrooms, I don't. Anyway, whatever.
I think we, and we, we fixed some of the framing and stuff. That was, that was kind of rotten and deteriorating, so that has been um replaced.
Problem with this, as long as, you know, doesn't.
And I think compared to some other facilities in the area.
And that was the other question, is how we.
Yeah, with, with these prices.
Cause Tesh- Teshawer, we used to live in, is Mixville, and they used to. Have similar. Uh but Teshawer's Teshawer.
The only thing I wish that we could do something with is the refundable deposit.
Well, no, the recommendation is non-refundable.
Well, there you go. Because I know that's always been a pain in the butt.
Not refundable, so you're, you're good there, so. Yeah, that was, actually, Janice was kind of adamant about that piece, um she said, because it just helps cover some of the custodial cost, because. And what was happening in the past, which I tried to correct when I came on board, is. The non-refundable, I mean, the refundable fee was take, was being taken out of the fee, it wasn't being collected as a separate. Deposit, it was, it, like, if it was four hundred dollars first, there was not a separate fifty dollar. For, you know, deposit. Once, when the fifty dollars was supposed to go back, it was being taken out of the rental fee.
Well, that was my next question, and so it's four fifty for. Proposal is four fifty to rent. Plus fifty?
Plus the fifty.
So it's actually five hundred.
Because right now.
It's three fifty.
It's three fifty.
Right.
You give the fifty, which makes it four hundred, but you get that fifty back.
Right, and some individuals are only paying three hundred. Because they've already given, they've already given the refund, the, the refundable deposit. And then you have to watch to make sure you're not refunding that deposit because they short paid the balance.
Yeah.
And it still is very inexpensive.
Yes.
I think so.
I had a family reunion there in August. It was a hundred bucks.
For the pavilion? Yeah.
Hundred bucks that came into my house. And they go to two hundred bucks is very inexpensive. But don't forget, again, there's a lifeguard.
There's a snowstorm, but it's okay.
Um, I don't know if you wanna go into the five hundred, six fifty range.
I, that's why I put two different proposals, um, because it is, is kind of a. Right now, like, the resident is three fifty, it goes up to five hundred. If you go to proposal two.
And, and this would just, we could change it up.
I mean, you could, you could, but, yeah, I, these were just suggestions. I didn't, I was kind of rounding up. Um, because we have to try to make some money when we do these rentals.
Right. We just have to see if we're gonna lose a lot of rentals.
Like I said.
If we do, then we can adjust it. It is what's going on.
Was, that was my question. I just, I don't have any feel for this at all.
I mean, right now, it's pretty much booked. I don't know about like now, but it's pretty much booked every weekend.
When do we want these to be effective? Like.
July first.
That's what I'm saying, that we wanna give people time to, anybody who's booked it will get. But if they're booking for anything after July first, they're gonna have the new fees.
All right, and, and.
Okay, so I would go with proposal one if I would, you know.
I agree. All right.
And we'll see, we'll see if it makes a difference in rental, and if it doesn't, then maybe we'll address it again.
Right, okay.
Or you guys can address it again.
Okay, so basically, just to review, Lakeview Lodge, proposal one, we have a fifty deposit. Fifty dollar non-refundable deposit for both, whether it's the lodge or the pavilion. And then resident for the Lakeview Lodge will be four fifty, non-resident five seventy-five. The pavilion will be resident two hundred and non-resident three hundred.
With the, with the fifty dollar. Okay.
When you rent the pavilion, how do you keep? Anybody from just coming in there and sitting down and you say, oh, no, I've got it.
You don't.
Well, I mean, you try to put up, we have the, the whiteboard and it'll say private party.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but we do have to, that people have access to the bathrooms.
Right.
But if we have tables and things up for a specific party, we have the whiteboard that will say private party.
If you ever go, going again, put the bathrooms on the side instead of.
Right, well.
But yeah, you can as well.
Okay, so you made a motion to.
To accept proposal number one.
Agreement, any other conversation?
Effective July first.
Uh, all in paper. Okay, I will let Janice know. We will need to revamp the, uh, all the forms, all the rental forms with the new informations. Okay, hmm, perfect. Uh, uh, we have the request in there for a memorial bench. For the young man that passed away. I, I basically sort of copied and pasted her, her request into this, uh. Packet here. And as a matter of fact, yes, she said her son was there, uh, a few days before he passed away with his friend, um.
Yeah, just that day.
Yeah, so, uh, we, and here's the question. Because I have a folder, we've had memorial benches in the past. And it's been done through the town where taxes have been saved because it's, it's purchased through the municipality. Um, I did have one person inquire, they wanted to do it on their own, and I was like, that's fine, but understand that. You have to still go by the specs we have for the benches, but you're also gonna be paying. Taxes on it. They never came back.
Taxes.
To buy the bench, to buy the, you know.
Oh, SaaS tax.
Your sales tax.
Now, is this a planning and zoning thing? They have to go to zoning? Because it has to be.
But the, we have, um, put them up at the, uh, Vet's Park.
But somebody has to inspect it, because I mean, obviously you're gonna have to bolt it to the ground.
Well, um, the town, we had the slabs. That's why it has to follow the specs, the bench has to be the specs.
No, but we don't have slabs that, that.
Tony, but the last one we had, Tony did have a slab and they paid for the slab, so it would be the.
They do have to go to someone, planning and zoning or. Or board selectmen or.
It was us. It, it was the board of selectmen that approved the, the last one.
No, all right, but, but somebody has to.
They would work with either public works as far as the placement.
Well, for an inspection to make sure, you know.
Memory of so and so. The way they.
But like I said, there's a, there's a, there was a specific, or there is a specific company if they're still in business. Um, that, so the benches would match when we did them around. But this isn't gonna be over at the pond. So, but it should, it should be the same specs and same type of.
Cuz if they don't put on a slab, it's gonna end up with no one in the swamp.
Right, so they would have to work the public works. Yeah, near the community garden.
Oh.
So, um, I will certainly. If we approve this, um, location and, and everybody's okay with it, I will follow up and reach out to her. Um, with the specs of. And what the cost would be. Now, the cost may have gone up because. This was three years ago, two years ago. Eighteen hundred for the bench. Eighteen hundred change, eighteen seventy-five, something like that. And it was then a couple of hundred dollars for the slab.
We, if you gotta buy a slab, have it transported, have our guys go on with a machine to pick the slab and put it down, level it and everything else. It's more than a couple of hundred bucks.
Cement yourself, no?
Again.
It has to be a specific slab cuz it's screwed onto the, the slab. Tony would know.
That's fine, but I say, as long as they understand that. Idea, but it's, it's gonna cost them, I mean.
Yeah.
We should know this stuff. We should just have it and say.
The, the price.
We'll get.
Potentially could have gone up since the last time we.
And we can just say, we'll check the price in twenty.
I will check out, I will check with the company. For the particular bench and Jack, Tony could check the cost of the slab, and then I can reach out to her. And say, this is what it's going to cost.
They'll want an engraving.
And they'll wanna put it, but they do the plaque too. The company will do the plaque as well.
Of course.
So, um, and of course, that's by the letter, what you wanna say.
Did the Boy Scouts do this or was I wrong? What did they do around the pond?
That was an Eagle Scout project by Robbie Rugiano. I believe it was, and he put up three. And then he also did the cleaning up, up of the memorial right behind the lodge.
Right, the memorial, the memorial benches really never took off. I don't wanna really see one or two people question about it, but then. It does get costly, I mean, just to, just to bring a four foot by six foot slab in and.
Yeah, no, he.
Drop it on the ground and level it off, you're talking.
Maybe this is.
So. But we will, we can follow up with Tony to, to find out, um. What, where he got the slab and, and the size and everything, because it's gonna obviously fit the bench, so.
Right, right. And you know, I had called you about the, the pond and the way.
It would have to be leveled and.
Cuz, yeah, cuz I noticed that it, you know, coming there because the fire trucks have come in and.
Conversation with them is like, where are you thinking you want this?
Yeah.
Where we know it can actually be placed without impeding fire trucks and that kind of thing.
Right, right.
Um, yeah, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a conversation, but I will follow up to.
Yes.
To get the information.
You gotta get information.
As long as we approve that, yes. Okay, all right, so do I have a motion that we will, you know. Follow up with.
Absolutely. Move forward with that.
Okay.
Um, and, and if we can get facts and just be able to. Paper and update it.
Yeah, absolutely, so. Any other conversation or pieces? All in paper? I will actually be in touch, I will, um. Kind of follow up with her tomorrow just to say that it was approved, but I will follow up to get all the necessary information as far as the specs and the cost.
Somewhere, it's, it's, it's in the building somewhere.
Yeah.
I have, I have a folder on the memorial benches, so. Uh, but I wanna contact the company cuz I am sure in the last two to three years, the cost has changed on that bench. I'm sure it's. So I wanna get, I'll just let her know it was approved, and then I will be back to her with all the other information once it's gathered.
The bench I know is Sandy Breslin, which is there at the Veterans Park.
Yeah. So.
Her name's there and all that, and I've probably been there, it's over five years now.
Um, Clifford Drive is still on hold. We're still waiting for the Mylar map and a couple of other pieces on that, uh. The ball is in their court at this point, um, so. As soon as we get that information, we will certainly bring closure to it. Um, item eleven, the gift to the town with the welcome sign. I, like I said last time, I had given them all the information. I have yet to hear back from them. Once again, the ball is in their court, um, as if they wanna pursue cuz there are things that they will be required to be. You know, responsible for. Um, the investments.
These investments are provided these, uh, an update there is, we put out in our F P. We've been like, just like saying on that one.
Yeah.
A couple of weeks. We received five responses. Steve Massey, Sharon Huxley, and myself interviewed three of the companies. We have narrowed it down to two. We have high confidence. And comfort with one provider. We have, we're not as warm and fuzzy feeling about the second provider. I am working on clarification in regards to the actual fees involved. I did reach out to our preferred individual today and his voice mailbox is full at his office.
That's not a good sign.
I know it is not a good sign, so I will reach out to one of his partners tomorrow. I did not get to that until late this afternoon, but I will reach out to one of the partners. And I do have his cell phone, I could call as well, but I did not wanna call the cell phone at four thirty in the afternoon. I figured I would do that at ten o'clock in the morning. Um, but what I would like to do is I would like. The Board of Selectmen's permission to, if the Board of Finance approves a vendor. For the service at our meeting next week. I would like your permission to re, to turn a contract over to legal for review.
Okay.
So that we don't have to wait another month, another month to move it forward.
I'll make, I'll make the motion pending Board of Finance approval or whatever.
Well, good. Any other conversation or questions? Beautiful. Uh, you wanna do any updates on the grants?
Grants are a massive work in progress. We keep getting more. And.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do keep getting more. And there is an ARPA update attached.
No, I don't think. But it's giving you a new one.
Well, act, well, that one, I think that will be the right one for this. Oh, no, it's not. This one is off.
Yeah.
All right, but it's a minor adjustment.
Oh, it's not because of.
Here, hold on. Everybody's done. Everybody should have.
What's different about it?
Well, the registrars, the number on the first sheet that was emailed out says thirty-two hundred, and the actual cost was fifty-five thirteen.
The final item at the bottom.
Yes.
Okay, you guys have looked at this, so.
Five, five, one, three.
Oh, okay.
So what is available that is unencumbered? Is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and six cents of our. Two eighty-five, seven forty-eight oh six of our one point six million dollars.
Okay, okay.
Um, it basically runs through, it's an accounting because of the town meeting on Thursday night.
Right.
Um, what was proposed? What we actually spent, how much is still encumbered? There's still five hundred and. There's five hundred thousand encumbered, so we still have two eighty-five available and. The encumbered column assumes. And the available comp, the unencumbered column assumes what we are putting forth at the town meeting Thursday night is approved.
Okay.
Okay.
So what, the negative seven hundred?
It means that we overspent from what we originally anticipated spending.
For, what, how does that, I.
It's for, um, the, no, it's for the, the technology, the, the seven hundred dollars at the bottom. That's, that's the owls and the cyber insurance. My guess is it's the additional pieces that we needed to purchase with the owls. The televisions, all the cords, the laptops.
Oh, it just, okay, we just under, under, uh.
We underestimated.
Um, what, what is this with the police cams? What's that?
Well. The proposed allocation was off the original thought process, the original. Potential ideas for use, using the money. Dave will need to have a, a police cam on him when he goes out in the future. The body cam.
Oh, that's what that is.
The body cam.
Oh, okay, he has to have those. What about the other guy?
The other guys will have, they will have to at some point.
Have we looked at, so the big issue had been, I don't know. Okay, so you give this us, how long do you keep, once you start recording, how long do you keep it, where you keep it?
That's all, it's all part of. Yes.
What, what, do we not know that?
We do not know that yet. That's why it's, it's only, that's why it's, it's. All the way over as an unencumbered amount.
That number will change.
We don't know, and he hasn't officially come to us and asked for the money. But he knows it is ARPA eligible. So that's why it's a placeholder, it's a placeholder.
Was it his idea to do it, or was it, was it? It's new to me, where did this come?
Well, it's, some, some of the information on, for the projects all the way on the left. Came out of the notes that I found in my desk drawer from Tom.
Oh.
So it probably goes back to the original conversation of what do we need to do and what can we spend ARPA funds for?
So, but, but Dan wanted this.
He's going, I don't know if it was or not, but he will need them, I know that. By law, he can do that. And some of, some of this also could have been, um. Could have come from a conversation Tom may have had with Rosa Deloro's office. We've got, we've got, we, we have all these projects that we know we, you know, that we've been talking about doing. What can we use ARPA for? And it got put in the column as a potential project.
Okay. Um, again, uh, all I know is that, sounds good to, to do. But this is the cheap side. The way in work, expensive and more thoughtful thing is, what do you do with the footage once you've recorded it?
Any kind of in-house story or if it's gonna go to the state.
Can we ask? Know what other towns are doing. And, and like.
Well, every, everyone's different though, cuz one of the things that we have to factor in is we do not have our own police force. We work with.
I know.
The resident trooper.
That's what I'm saying.
So the reason, the reason why Dave has not come to us with a formal proposal. Is he is trying to figure out what he can get the state to pay for versus we have to be responsible for.
Yeah.
So that's why he keeps going like, well, maybe, maybe I need twenty thousand, maybe I need fifty thousand. I don't know where it falls yet, and he doesn't know who's going to be ultimately responsible for it yet.
Okay.
It's a placeholder.
Yeah.
Right, got it, okay.
Okay.
All right.
So that is our ARPA update kinda in a. Any other questions on it?
And, and we have until. Twenty twenty-four to encumber the funds. Six to spend.
I am sure we'll think of.
Things always seem to pop up.
We're lucky to be able to have it, but I, the things that does keep coming. We're lucky to be able to have it, but I, the things that does keep coming up is we have so many grants. Really, really, do we need somebody on staff who's so dedicated to grant management and they could also be doing. Something else like newsletters or this or that.
Actually, we were overwhelmed initially, four months ago, we are not anymore.
Okay.
It was the initial impact, because there were so many that came all at once.
Yeah.
Okay, that it was like, we need to do this, we need to do this one, you know, so.
We now. We've taken a step back, we actually feel like we can breathe, that we can move forward with them. Um, the, the steep grant, we have the contract, Don just has to schedule the work. And then that's a reimbursement.
And, and the complicated stuff that you got from Scrog, are you using that format?
I mean, anything, if something comes up that we don't understand, we just reach out to them and they help us.
Come in and do it for us.
They won't, they won't write them for us, but they will guide us.
But I mean.
We, we had, we had a Zoom meeting the other day on the trip grant.
Yeah, we did.
And, and we think we're gonna get that.
Well, they, they.
Confident, because we're the only ones.
We, we were ahead of the game, that's what they were looking for, you have to get an editor drawing, so I have it right here on my desk, oh, yeah, we're already good, okay, good.
Nice.
So, yeah, they're very good.
Okay, yeah, the Cabrera grant, it does appear as though we're going to be getting the funds. We just don't know when. Um, we're working with. The behind the scenes people that we have to, as well as Senator Cabrera himself.
I actually. And said, um, when I got back here, I emailed him everything we had just sent to the other ladies that were supposedly processing this. Because I told them, we are completely frustrated, we keep giving them everything they want. And then they keep asking us for more, and it's like, we don't know how much more we can give them.
They keep moving the goalposts.
You know.
Because it goes from her office, oh, we're good, then it goes to her office, or you need this. Somebody in the state, somebody in the state.
We were completely frustrated. Process back in September.
Because they told us that since it's a capital project, we don't have to. Our process for getting the funds is different than a nonprofit that supplied for the money that lost money.
Yeah, totally different, yeah.
And she said, no, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, and then it's like starting all over again, so it was, yeah, so, like the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing, it's, it's been.
And the election's over, so.
Yes, and moving on, um, the Delaro money. Reaching out to the office to find out. How to spend the money and where we spend the money.
Right, yeah, I actually got an invitation to Rosa's doing some kind of municipality leaders lunch and next Wednesday. And I quickly responded, yes, I will be there. Directly with her. And hopefully, we'll be there too, because he's been my, my go-to bag.
That's, that's actually perfect, that's, that's what we need to do, and Don did touch on the trip grant, it's not on here.
Right.
But we are asking for permission to apply for the grant. And what it would do is it would move a major road project off of our capital expenditures.
And it's a major expense, so it's.
And it would be covered by this grant, and yes, we did meet with the DOT. With a representative from DOT as well as Scrog, and we have all the engineering plans in place, we have all of our prices in place. It is, and we are the only town in Scrog that qualifies. So they do not see why we will not receive them funds. This go around on this one.
And it's very fast-tracked, we'll have the money by July first.
Yes, and it is not.
Yes, correct, it is not reversible.
And then the next round begins July first, so we can apply for another round.
The trip grants, I'll be, the, the availability is one time a year for five years, and then it's a done thing.
Yeah, and they have about five million dollars to give away.
Throughout the state of this round, for this round. Uh, transportation or rural improvement.
Each frog has to compete for it. Each cog. But it has to be a rural community in a cog, and we're only rural. That doesn't mean we automatically get the grant, because it's still.
But our reliability and our cob are, is up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
And one, there was an engineer from Cardinal who said for round one of the trip grants. It would not behoove the state to not award a project to each cog.
We have a whip.
Work for about four hundred dollars.
Um, so that, that's where we stand with all of our, our grants. Simpson Properties still a hold, where they are reaching out. Waiting on that revised approval on the survey, so, uh, they, I had an email yesterday and, uh. We're hoping we will hear something very soon. Uh, any other items?
Yes.
I knew you would not.
I couldn't find anything, uh, on Greenhaven, although people did go and talk. To, um, uh, P and Z about potential project.
My understanding right now, is because I just drove by there last night, as a matter of fact, it says sundown. But they, Sunwood, sorry.
They're the ones.
The bank has hired that company. So, apparently, this is my understanding, to complete the project. And once it is completed. Then it potentially may be given off to another company to manage as potential rentals.
They're gonna be turning the community center into three.
More units.
Units.
Yeah, I did that.
And it's gonna be paid, it'll all be paid. As opposed to the third.
Um, affordable.
Affordable, yes.
Still, it's still gonna be, it's gonna be rentals, which is gonna be a.
But.
Well.
Whatever, game changer, and not, and not cheap rentals, it's not like it's gonna be.
Oh, no, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Interesting.
But that's, that's my understanding right now, but they still have to go through the whole process with the permits and the whole business, so.
Hey, someone. Who's mostly resident. No, they're on a. They're good, they're actually very good.
So the bank has hired them to go forward to try to complete this project, that's, that's the first.
P and Z last, last meeting. Well.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't, there was no meeting in minutes, yeah.
So that's basically where that stands right now.
Wow, Laurel with milk, she was taking minutes.
From what they said, it's pretty much.
That's pretty much right.
It's pretty much a done deal from what they were saying.
Actually, uh, good, good news for the town, to tell you the truth.
The company that owns it's gonna have.
It's not just that, that the Sunwood is, is, is a good company. As opposed to other companies that I know of, say in the valley that you don't want in Bethany. Sunwood is a good company.
Could you know?
As far as I know.
Okay.
My little knowledge.
Okay.
The other question is on the going backwards to, um, the gun range.
Okay.
What is it, what are the next steps? I think I've gotten phone calls, I don't know if you have.
Well, I actually, um, before the meeting had started, I had given them because, um. Hiram had provided me with a number for the Valley Cog. Uh, with regard to any of the residents that had concerns or whatever. Uh, to call this number, ask for the planner, who would then direct them to. The correct person to handle any of the complaints or, uh, concerns that they had. Um, we could collectively do a letter with all three signatures.
I think that's, I would like to do that, and, and if you don't propose it, I will.
That's why I just said it.
We, we need to, as a, as a Board of Selectmen, we need to put forth that we have concerns about the impact of. Of Bethany residents and property.
I can draft something and maybe have Ben help to.
Call, come in and sign it.
Yeah, we will, we will work on, I thought it would be better collectively with all three of our signatures on it as opposed to just mine.
We should do it as soon as possible.
Yeah, no, I'll work on it, yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't want to, I, I, luckily what happened is I got. I got emails and calls from people, and I did go and I looked up where it was and, and. The residents is, oh, so and so is.
I'm, I'm in that target zone with the pistols and the rifles. My, my, by my streets, right there in that, the green and purple or whatever colors it is.
Yeah.
So, here's my question. To the mayor. To the planning and zoning. Who, who do we want this letter to go to, besides the mayor?
There are a bunch of people, but, uh.
Is there any other commissioner board that is addressing this issue over there?
Uh, well, approval goes through.
So basically, it could be.
Now, I know, Don, you're in favor, because you wanna use it, but. You were living there, would you be in favor of it? Living in the same neighborhood as these people?
I can't. You know.
I sort of do live there, I virtually wish they put a window there now.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and at first flush, I had looked at it and I thought it was in a different place, and I thought. And then I looked more carefully. And.
Made the comment, there was a positive, what was the positive he said?
He said it was indoors, he would join it.
Indoor doors, but there was something else he had said, we'll have to go back and, and look at this.
No burn or anything, so, and, 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 and anybody. I didn't think they're using lead, he did mention lead, I didn't think they were gonna have a lot of lead.
Grandfathering an old. The old.
Yes, Don, that's a.
Yes, so there was, there was something to the application, some kind of an amendment.
So that they can't have any more in town, but that one that's at the town garage.
Okay.
Well. Yes, we should definitely do it, and, and say we have, on behalf of Bethany residents, we've come forward, we have concerns about. Um. What the impact will do to, um, our. Our residents, there's a list of things that they had talked to here, did they send anything writing to you?
No. They just, they just, they just came in, we just, they just were here at the beginning of the meeting, so nothing was. In advance.
Bob could even put something in.
But we have it in the minutes, so, so we can, we can pull the comments out of the minutes and work off of those.
I know that. You know, we're going to the, uh. It's only a nature center there, there's a gun range right there. That horrifies me, I, what my kids, they're when they're little, and I couldn't stand it.
I can imagine the dogs on the corner, like she said, where the, the. It's not Keystone anymore, whether the key. The animals will be out of their minds with the, with the noise.
No, that's terrible.
My horse lived right there, and she totally didn't care anymore. My horse lived right behind that, the property right behind the gun range, and they don't even care, they get so used to it, it's really funny.
Where's the horse dead?
The horses, but I mean, they're living.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. She just texted me to make sure we add the cogs.
Yeah.
Frog, and, uh, can you, can you explain rocks? Not quite sure what that means. They noticed the town clerk rifle range, she said add both cog and rocks, I. Not sure.
Rex is having to do it, though, Rex is economic development.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, maybe, maybe it was an auto. Correct, so, okay, never mind. I put, I added cops, so P and Z, the mayor and, um, the cops.
I mean, I guess there purposely, there's a reason why it's open and not enclosed to the building. Right? Why they?
Well, most, most gun ranges are open.
Yeah.
Marlins, well, Marlins and there was used to be one down on the post road that was. Oh, indoor gun range.
There's one down Orange, I think, or Milford on the post road.
Yeah.
There's, um, one in Wallingford.
In Cheshire.
There's one in Bristol up by ESPN.
Yes.
I'm not sure where else, uh.
But not thirty five lanes.
You have thirty five lanes going. Almost all day long for seven days a week, but.
The Margaret took one all the time.
You know, it depends on where it is and how it's set up and how long it's been there, and all sorts of things, and it does not. I would not wanna be in that neighborhood, maybe you're.
Well, they're on fire too, I'm, I'm down.
Straight bullets and peace, oh, gosh.
No, no, it's not, Lacy and Noel were up higher. Than, you know, so. So we can, we can, we can certainly put a letter together for our three signatures and, um.
Maybe to the Nantucket Valley.
Well, cog and scrog, cog and scrog, because we're.
Right, right, the Nantucket cog and, and us, and scrog, so, yeah. And, uh, and the mayor, who's the mayor?
Mayor Bob, he's been there. Yeah, Bob Chatfield.
I'm, yeah, he's been there forever.
Yeah.
So, he doesn't believe in computers.
That, that would be. Uh, all in favor will do a letter for all three of our signatures.
Absolutely. Okay, strongly worded letter.
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor, I. Thank you, everybody, thank you, Sharon, and thank you, Fred.
Good night.
Good night, good night, we're gonna shut off the taping and we're going to.